Meeting in the Economic Development Committee. I'm joined here by members of the Common Council, including Counselor Genshols, the First District Counselor, Counselor Michael Green, who's a Counselor at Large, Counselor Amir Gatheres. I did look and see, I think Counselor Driscoll, Fifth District Counselor is here, Counselor Latoya Ayl, the Fourth District Counselor. So I am going to turn this over. Before we get started, I'm going to, I'm going to mention that we'll probably keep this meeting to an hour. This meeting will be to discuss rezone, but I think we're going to be the first of a series of meetings. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kearney of the zoning department.
Great. Counselor Hogan, committee members, we appreciate your time today. We're excited to provide an update and discussion about restarting the Rezone Syracuse project. And we're going to, we're going to have a presentation today, which I'll, I'm going to share my screen in just a minute. But before we do, I just wanted to allow some of the team members here to do introductions, kind of the core team here. I'm just shifting. Is everybody able to see the presentation? Okay, great. So yes, before we get into this, I'd just like a couple of people to introduce themselves. And maybe we'll start with the planning and zoning team, Dan and Heather, if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Sure, Owen. I'm Dan Koznowski. I'm the Planning Director of the Syracuse Anadag County Planning Agency.
Hi, I'm Heather Lamandola. I'm the City Zoning Administrator.
And I suppose I probably should have introduced myself. I'm Owen Kearney. I believe I know most of you. I'm with the City's Planning Division and have been leading this effort for Rezone Syracuse for a few years now. Before, before I go to the next slide, I also want one, our legal counsel, who is helping us with SEACR, just to ask if Matt, you could introduce yourself also?
Hi, Owen. Hi everyone. Matt Kerwin, I'm an attorney with Barclay Dayman here in town, acting as Secret Counsel for, for the city of this.
Great. Thank you. So our, our meeting agenda today, really a two-part presentation. The first, Matt, who just introduced himself, is going to provide an overview of the SEACR process, the New York State Environmental Quality Review. That's really the, the crux, and that's essentially going to be the, the item before you hear shortly, relative to the Rezone Syracuse project. The second part of the presentation is I am going to provide an update on Rezone Syracuse. Again, look at a review of the project goals, our accomplishments to date, our summary of our next steps. And then with the time left, and, and with Counselor Hogan's direction, any questions and answers before we wrap up? So that's our meeting agenda. That's what we hope to accomplish today. And I'm going to turn it over to Matt. He's going to provide that SEACR overview before we get into Rezone.
Thanks, Owen. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. So I'm just going to give up some brief comments about SEACR. I'm sure some of you are familiar with, with the statute a little bit from your, how you work with the council, but I wanted to give you just a kind of a refresher, a brief refresher at that, as to what the, you know, what the law amounts to, why we have to comply with it here, and kind of where we are in the SEACR process. So with that, just very briefly, SEACR was enacted in the seventies, essentially to, to reiterate the need for local agencies to see themselves as stewards of the environment, to protect our natural resources, air, water, specifically. And the purpose of the act is to ensure that local agencies and state governmental agencies like yourself take into account and consider environmental factors when entering into planning, view and decision-making activities. SEACR, which stands for the State Environmental Quality Review Act, it's important to note, must be completed before any local agency like yourself can undertake, fund or approve an action. So in this case, we've got the Rezone ordinance and map before the Common Council, and for that matter, the Planning Commission can consider acting on whether to adopt that. You have to complete the SEACR process. So this is important. It's an important step in the process. It's one we've, we've initiated over the last few years to try and get to this point. And we're, we're in the middle of it, so to speak. So, and I'll, I'll update you on where we are in just a second or two. But, you know, why, why is it necessary to do SEACR for the Rezone? I think the question comes down to, to one simple explanation. That is, this is an action defined under the, under the law. You know, the law, as I mentioned, states that all state local government agencies are required to complete a SEACR review for any action they have the discretion to undertake, fund or approve. And again, the adoption of Rezone and associated map, zoning map for the city constitute an action that's subject to SEACR review. So if the council were to, for whatever reason, bypass their SEACR review in connection with this application, procedural defect, it could be easily challenged. So we're trying to ensure that all the steps are filed, you know, going forward and that the, that the appropriate mechanisms are in place for the boards to, to take appropriate action at the appropriate time. So the Common Council is the lead agency. Is that, it's a quote, it's a term of art under SEACR. It's essentially the lead agency for the purpose of completing the review. As the lead agency, you're responsible for undertaking the review, working with staff to prepare the necessary forms, potentially go for the appropriate evaluations of potential environmental impacts to ensure that whatever action you decide to take is in compliance with the SEACR law. Again, as the lead agency, you're going to determine whether the adoption of Rezone will have a significant adverse impact on the environment or not. The steps we've taken to this point are intended to address all of your statutory requirements under the law to ensure that you're, you're in the proper position down the road to, to make the determination. I should point out that while the council is an involved, is the lead agency for the review and responsible for undertaking the review and completing it, the Planning Commission is considered an involved agency. And what that means is the Planning Commission, if you recall, previously consented to the Common Council acting as lead agency. So they're essentially waiting for the Common Council to complete this review before they can undertake the action that will be before them pursuant to the city charter. Any questions on that before I kind of jump into where we are in the process? No? Okay. So the process is pretty straightforward. It's laid out in the statute. And where we are right now, well, I'll take you through where we've been. So to start the process, the council had to first classify the action. They were given a copy of the, of the, the Rezone at the time. It's, it's been eyes slightly since then, but they were provided with a copy of the Rezone to initiate the SEACR process. You declared yourself lead agency for the review, and you ultimately issued, issued what's called a positive declaration with the intent of preparing what's called an environmental impact statement. So in issuing the positive declaration, you determined back then, and some of you were on the commission, on council, some of you were, but the council determined back then that there were, there were various potential environmental impacts. You felt warranted further review and evaluation in the form of any environmental impact statement. And specifically, you decided to pursue the preparation of a generic environmental impact statement, which is appropriate in a sense because the Rezone is, it's, it's essentially a land use ordinance, and the GEIS process is, is really designed to accommodate and approach and review of this broad nature. So you're pursuing the right path in terms of the DGES. So in terms of where we are, you previously completed the scoping process, which is required in this case. The scoping process essentially was intended to identify those potential environmental impacts that you felt should be addressed more thoroughly in the, in the DGES. It also allowed you to, essentially it helped to create an outline for the environmental impact statement itself. And it gives you, it gave you the opportunity to eliminate various issues that you deemed insignificant or irrelevant based on your evaluation at that time. That scoping document has been finalized, and that again, forms the outline for the draft generic environmental impact statement, which is currently nearing completion. So in terms of remaining steps in the process, we have a few. We have, again, a draft generic environmental impact statement that's, that's in progress, nearing completion. I believe Owen's going to touch, touch on this more in a few minutes here, but that should be coming your way shortly. From that point, you will need to determine whether that, you feel that document is complete for the purposes of opening it up for public reviewing comment. Once that determination is made, the public would have enough underneath to provide public comment on the document itself, the generic environmental impact statement. After off, after the public comment period ends, the council will then have to prepare with staff's assistance, what's called a final generic environmental impact statement. There are some timing constraints in terms of when it's got to be done and how quickly it's got to be completed, but I have no doubt that we'll, we'll comply with all those requirements. And then once the final generic environmental impact statement is, is completed and adopted by the board, by the council, you would then have to issue what's called a finding statement. And the finding statement essentially wraps up the entire process, sets forth the board's determination as to whether or not you feel you've complied with the requirements of SEACR, and whether or not, you know, approval of the Rezone, appropriate or not, given, given the evaluation that's taking place at that point. So that's kind of SEACR in a nutshell. Again, we're about a third, maybe a half of the way through it right now. Probably has three to four or five more months to go, depending on scheduling and, some, some, some other variables. But have been entertaining any questions at this point? If anybody has any here, I can just hand off to Owen for, for the next, next.
I just want to mention that we have Counselor Caldwell and the Counselor Majuck joined us, and I, the deputy mayor is here too. Any members of the council want to question Mr. Kerwin on this issue? I know this is especially a lot to absorb, especially for the new counselors, but doing a SEACR for the, a whole city has got to be fairly unusual, I imagine. I, I know this zoning process, if I'm not mistaken, the last time we attempted this was back in 1968, correct, Owen?
Sixty-seven was generally the last time we, we, we looked at this, yes.
And the last, the time before that was 1922. So we're taking on a massive sort of a undertaking that hasn't been attempted too much before. I wasn't around for the 1922, the one, the, Mr., I think our, our city auditor was. So any, if there's no more other question, there's no other questions, where do you want to go from here, Owen?
Well, thanks, Counselor. I will, I'm going to take over, and we're going to get into the, the Rezone. If, if anything can make zoning look exciting, it is SEACR. That might be the only thing. So appreciate that, Matt. Great overview. The, the needless to say, Matt and, and the city law department, particularly Joe Barry and Catherine Conrake are all working closely to advise us and presumably advise all of you through this relatively detailed process that Matt laid out. So that's the SEACR update. As I said, I'm going to shift into a presentation on Rezone, and just wanted to start by talking a little bit, and I'm looking at my screen over here, about zoning. I think Rezone is a zoning project, and as defined by the city, it's essentially a, a set of land use regulations, how property owners may use and develop their land. It's divided into districts. Zoning is typical nationwide. It's frankly, an international way to control land use and development. As the counselor referenced, we have not updated ours since 1967. And as Heather pointed out earlier to me, it really re-codified at that time. It's almost been longer since we really comprehensively updated it. It's been a long time. The President Johnson was in office, Thurgood Marshall was on, on the Supreme Court, and they introduced the Big Mac. I'm trying to make zoning a little bit more relevant here, but the point being is, it's been a long time. And we are set to revise and update it comprehensively as part of Rezone. That is, that really the gist of it, of, of Rezone is a comprehensive revision of the city's zoning ordinance and map. The project goals, how we set out to, to accomplish this was identified really in those project goals. In the bulk of this presentational walk through, essentially how we did that, creating a user-friendly ordinance, updating zoning districts, modernizing land uses, thinking about design standards, and streamlining the development review process. So as I said, really, the, the rest of this presentation, we'll, we'll kind of walk through how we accomplished that. Before we do, just very briefly, Rezone Syracuse specifically is, will include these three items, a new zoning ordinance, which is really where the, the rules and regulations are, the new zoning map, and finally, as Matt just talked about, the associated SEACR documents, the, the scoping documents, the GEIS, the finding statement. So these are all three elements that will be coming your way in the coming weeks. And we'll talk a little bit of, of more about when you're receiving them, but that is essentially what you will be asked to consider in the coming weeks. The timeline, where, where we've, most of you looking at the, at the screen here have been involved, whether in your current role and a former role as a resident, but just wanted to briefly kind of provide an overview. We've been working on this for some time. That's maybe the takeaway from this slide. We started really in the, in 2016 outlining the project. We spent much of 2016 and 27, 2017, developing the content, really sort of drafting the different sections, the different chapters. We had three consecutive drafts that were, were prepared, all, and then the most recent in December of 2019, that's the one that's been posted on the, on the city's website for some time. And right around that time is when we started the SEACR review process. We're before you again now, reintroducing, restarting that process with updated SEACR documents and with the zoning ordinance and map. So obviously during, during the last year and a half to two years, we paused. One thing that I think is, has been constant through this process is the public input process. We've had public input the entire time, and obviously, the pandemic has, has put a little bit of a wrinkle in that, but we are obviously restarting that discussion with meetings like this today. As I said, public meetings, which I know many of you have attended, we've had close to 100 public meetings throughout the city. We've had 55, probably close to 60 stakeholder meetings with various interest groups, engineers, architects, public health advocates, elected officials, transportation organizations. We've talked to a lot of people as we have developed this, and, and really that input has, you, you saw those three drafts, and essentially we're on draft number four. All of those revisions and adjustments to this process, to the ordinance, have largely been based on that public input, public engagement. So I think that's important to remember. It really has been refined over the last few years based on public, public input, resident input. So wanted to mention that before we got into the project goals. And again, this, the first one, and, and a real important one, creating a user-friendly ordinance. Zoning is typically not something that is considered terribly easy to, to, to understand or work with. Our current 1967 version on the left is, was, was written in a very matter-of-fact way. There was limited formatting, there was almost no graphics, limited tables, not something that's easy for everybody to use. Obviously, many people on this call are familiar with it and can navigate it, but for property owners, for homeowners, for people that want to make investments in the city, it's not easy to necessarily open that up and determine what you need to do to get your project from start to finish. And so what, one of the big elements of this, and a goal, was to create an ordinance that's just easy, that you don't necessarily have to be an engineer or an architect to, to use, that you can pick it up as a neighborhood property owner, as a resident, and work your way and evaluate what you need to do relative to zoning if you are making an investment in your property. Simplify it, clear layouts, using graphics, using table. Again, this is something that, as you can imagine, has been well-received and something we frankly should have done a while ago, but it's, it's a big part of this project. Keeping on that, that user-friendly element, a couple new additions, in addition to just the, the formatting and things like that, we've added some additional elements of, of the, of zoning or to zoning to, to help the public and help applicants. First one being a staff report tool. The, the city produces, evaluates zoning applications and writes staff reports, analyzes basically the applications, and identifies the merits and the deficiencies, and, and does that via a staff report. And that's largely an internal document that's, that's now, it's our intention to, to use this in a way and to share that with applicants. So the applicants essentially know where they stand, what their application, how does it meet or not meet the various requirements and regulations? Again, improving dialogue with the public, with residents, with applicants. Second item, public notification. You see the sign there? We notify, we, our, our public hearings and public meetings are on our city website, they're in the newspaper, but we know everybody's not looking at the website and, and reading the newspaper. We have proposed to install signage on-site, so people that are walking by the development site, that people are biking, that people live around the corner, can look at a sign on a site, and this, as you can see, is out of Maryland, but it has more information on what's being proposed there. You don't necessarily have to be tied into the city website or the city email blast, but that these signs are either, either in a window of a building, on a vacant site, and they help share information with area residents. So they, one, can be aware of what's being proposed in their neighborhood, but two, and perhaps more, more importantly, offer public comments about it. We support this, we have questions about this, we have concerns about this. Again, trying to get people, neighborhood residents, more involved in the zoning, the public process relative to zoning. Final item, as far as user-friendly, is an administrative manual. While we are simplifying the zoning ordinance, it's still a 250-page document, down from about 350, but nonetheless, it's still a big ordinance, even if it is easier to use and understand. The administrative manual is something that we've developed as kind of a user's guide, something we don't currently have now. All three of these elements are new, and we feel, not feel, we have heard will be well-received by the community, both residents and, and the development community. Those are, again, a couple items on how we are making this a, a more user-friendly document. Updating zoning districts. Again, 1967, a lot has changed. While there have been adjustments, probably almost every year, the zoning office, Heather and her team are adjusting and improving the ordinance, it hasn't been done comprehensively. One of the big project goals was to do that. And so we developed a new set of zoning districts, which you see there. Some of them real similar to old zoning districts. Again, it was, these were built on the existing districts, but we expanded upon them. So we still have residential zoning districts, but we have also implemented, implemented and developed some new zoning districts that reflect current and future market demands in the city. Two of those that, again, I, I think are worth calling out, one, the mixed-use districts. These are districts largely neighborhood corridors, think Butternut, South Ave, West Genesee, Westcott Street, South Salina, Grand Boulevard, Valley Drive, primary corridors in our neighborhood where goods and services either are, or should be available to the neighborhoods around them. We've created these mixed-use districts to allow a greater mix of uses that people can walk to, that are easily accessible, and it will essentially host a range of different uses along these neighborhood business corridors, again, to provide goods and services to folks adjacent to those districts. The other one is our, a, a new district is an open space district. Currently, our parks, our wooded areas, our steep slopes, our recreational areas are zoned residentially, which is really not appropriate. That we're not looking for Heath Park or McKinley Park, as two examples you see there, to be developed residentially. And not that I, I think there's probably any intention to do so, but they're zoned in a way that it's a resident, currently a residential zoning district. So we've developed this open space district to preserve, just as the slide says, parks, recreation and natural areas. Again, common sense improvements to our zoning districts. Next slide, modernized land uses. I'll stop harping on, on the age of the ordinance, but needless to say, there are a variety of different uses that are outdated, that are still in the ordinance. We've removed those, and there's increasingly a range of different new uses that really aren't accommodated in the, in the current zoning district. So what we have done, developed a, a whole host of new land uses. Obviously, some of them are the same, single-family, two-family housing, things like that, dormitories. But we've also developed a, probably a couple dozen new districts based on current needs, current desires, and trends, nationwide trends that we're seeing, a few of them as examples. And the, the tables there, again, getting back to that ease of use, it's all laid out in a table, it's well-organized, it's easy and accessible. Some of those new, new uses, and we'll, we'll, the next page, we'll, maybe we'll talk about these in a little bit more, more detail. Row homes, top left corner, or while there are row homes in the city, attached homes, however you, townhomes, however you want to call, consider them or call them, they're not really something that is clearly identified as a permitted use currently. In an effort to increase housing choice, housing affordability, communities nationwide allow row homes. This is something, again, a new use in the district that we, that we feel is relevant and a good addition. Neighborhood coffee shop, recess coffee over on, what street is that?
Oh, that's in the Second Council District, by the way. And it's a nice, on your part and adding that.
Well, this isn't, this isn't my first presentation, Counselor. I know where to pick my photos from. Things like that. Obviously, currently, many of those food-related uses are just considered a restaurant, a bar, things like that. And there's a pretty robust review, and I think we'd all agree, something like a coffee shop is a pretty complimentary addition to many neighborhoods. It's not a bar, it's not something that's necessarily going to meet a whole lot of opposition. Let's create some new uses to make it easier for uses like this to be developed in and along our business districts. Accessory dwelling units in the bottom right. This is very topical. I know at the state level, there's some state legislation being considered to allow these additional, the development and construction of these additional units. We have proposed to allow them in all of our residential and mixed-use districts, again, creating another housing choice and, and improving housing affordability. I mean, when you look nationally at, hey, how, how to help create affordable housing, more choices, more options, a range of sizes, things like row homes, townhomes, accessory dwelling units are a start to doing that. We've added that to Rezone. Finally, I, I saw the Budget Director on the call earlier, we are, have proposed to allow hens. We know that they exist in the city. What we are doing is creating some rules and regulations. If you are going to do it, there are some standards now on how you do that, where you keep them, and how you operate that. So again, some of these things, a, a long time coming, but again, thinking about how we create housing options, how we provide a range of new and attractive uses to folks. Introducing uniform.
Owen, could I just interrupt a little bit here?
Sure.
I, I know you had a lot of neighbor, meetings, a lot of open meetings and all that. I'm just wondering, what, what were the numbers as far as how many people actually attended all that, those?
Um, some of those meetings were four or five people. We had some meetings that were 40 to 50 people that we, we held.
Predicated on what neighborhoods they were in? Predicated on what neighborhoods they were in that, in, I mean.
And, and also the type of meetings. Some of our, um, some of the meetings that we scheduled uh were, were lighter attended, but then you go to a, a TNT meeting um and, and you get 25, 35 people. Uh, so it really ranged from probably five to about 50, I think would be a, a realistic range. But considering 100 meetings, I mean, we, we've, we've reached between our email list, um, our public meetings. Uh, we're, we, we've reached over a thousand people, probably thousands of people in our community about this project.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you up, uh, interrupt you, but I wanted to get that out there. And I also know President Hudson's uh on the, uh, on this call too. So go on, Owen, if you could.
We'll, we'll do. Um, the fourth and uh, fourth goal, fourth out of five, uh, design standards, building and site design standards. This really gets at the crux of, of zoning. Um, we currently have some design standards in uh along James Street. As some of you are familiar, uh, in the lakefront area, but we really don't have citywide building and site design standards. Some communities have extremely detailed uh regulations about how the building color, building materials. We have taken sort of a, a middle-of-the-road approach. Uh, things like the front door of the building should face the street, you know, things that are fairly logical. Um, residential buildings need a certain amount of transparency and windows. Uh, certain uh, uh, building materials are, shouldn't be used, uh, something like a concrete block for uh, a new residential building. We've taken a light approach, but one that we feel is a good start uh to help improve aesthetics, um, help improve uh decision-making, uh, help improve expectations as far as investments uh in the city and, and the design of those. Thinking about, and, and again, when, when the right there, a few of those standards and, and the next two slides will, will talk through these. Uh, landscaping, increasing those, um, thinking about how landscaping can help improve the aesthetics of a site, how it can help improve safety, how it can cut down, uh, help define uh commercial areas from residential areas. Um, thinking about signage standards. We have a lot of signage. I think we all can probably close our eyes and think of a store or a place in the city that's just overwhelmed with signage, tightening up those signage regulations. Um, development compatibility. I mentioned those, those mixed-use corridors. South Ave, uh, Seneca Turnpike, uh, James Street, West Scott, you know, we're all around the city. Each one of those districts, the property directly behind it is almost in always a residential property. People live behind our business corridors. Where these things to meet are, are, are really the, the goal of zoning. How do you ameliorate? How do you minimize the, the conflict between these different uses? Design standards are a great way to do that. So the, the development compatibility standards you see there on the bottom right are just that. How is new development on James Street? And the property behind it, how do the, where do, where those come together? How do you do that in a way where the lights aren't shine, the, the lights aren't shining in the window? Uh, the, uh, the parking is not encroaching into the residential areas. Um, the, the h- h- outdoor operation isn't bothering neighbors. All of these things are done via um zoning uh design standards. Um, I, I want to do a couple additional items, uh, parking. We have robust and very generous part, on-site parking requirements. If you're building a building, you need this much parking on-site. There's a variety of reasons why that, and nationally, people have either been reducing or removing their parking requirements. Had a lot of con- conversations with Counselor Green about this over the years. Uh, we have removed or reduced our parking requirements, on-site parking requirements citywide. Um, obviously, that provides not only the aesthetic benefits, but things like stormwater uh and a reduction to project cost. Parking is an expensive uh proposition, and the development community has been very supportive of uh reduction in parking requirements. Bike infrastructure, we, you know, we have places for, for pedestrians and places for cars. Uh, but increasingly, we know people are using uh bikes for commuting, for traveling. Uh, and we have very few require, I don't think we have any recurrent requirements in the ordinance. So we've developed that as part of these uh de- design standards. And finally, um, building design, the actual structure. I started talking about this earlier. Building placement and massing, the size of the building, transparency in and out of the building. Um, mix of uses for larger site. These are some very basic design standards that will raise expectation for new development in the city. Uh, and something that all of these standards have been um fairly well-received by the development community, by the design community as we've, we've briefed them. Um, here's a good example uh that, and I don't see them on the call, but uh I've, I've received this, this photo from a, a neighborhood advocate who had pointed out that, just the, the status of that. This is actually one of perhaps dozens of photos I've uh received from this neighborhood advocate. But here's a, a, an example of how these new design standards could potentially work. Reducing sign clutter, providing transparency into the store. Um, including landscaping, which is really non-existent. Bike facilities, uh, improve exterior lighting. And again, the, the loose trashcans and dumpsters in the back uh that you can just barely see there, or adjacent to somebody's property. They should be screened, they should be enclosed, so the neighbors don't have to look uh at the trash. So here's, here are a couple examples of how we could potentially improve and tighten up um, development and, and investment in the city with these new standards. Um, final project goal, streamline the development review process. This is something, obviously, um, we have a robust review process now. We looked at how we can um improve the clarity of that process. Uh, what are important procedural steps? How do we communicate that with applicants to improve predictability? They have a sense of where they're going, where they start and where they end and how long it's going to take. Uh, we've done that, obviously, through the use of graphics, uh, tables, things like that. We've also sort of right-size review. Minor projects get a minor, a more minor review typically. Larger projects get a more robust review. There's not a sort of one-size-fits-all process. Um, and, and help, you know, smaller things can be done uh quicker and more efficiently. Larger things that, that weren't a larger review get that. Uh, specifics like uh new fees and submittal requirements will be included that in that administrative manual. And finally, having a little bit, building in some flexibility, uh, the zoning administration office. Um, not often, but there are times where, you know, there are a foot off here, there's six inches off there. Having some of these minor setback, building height, things like that, rather than have to go back through a review process, having some flexibility built in where um the zoning administrator, Heather and her team, are able to do that administratively. Again, thinking about um user experience, thinking about simplifying things. Uh, these are some procedures we developed uh to do that. Um, a new procedure uh that we've talked about, and this is, this has been in all of the drafts, but the, the site plan review procedures. Again, uh, some of you may be familiar with the project site review process, which is unique to Syracuse. We essentially developed that uh of, about 20 or 30 years ago. Site plan review is a, a state process, and we are essentially kind of bringing our um, bring ourselves into compliance with those, that sort of site plan uh review process, which is well-established, used by all the adjacent communities in Anadaga County. Um, and that, one of the elements of that is the sketch plan review. Working with applicants early in the process, so they can come in, talk to staff, even talk to the planning commission and others early before they make the investment uh in all of the final plans and, and final engineer drawings. Um, that they can have that sort of first pass, get a sense of where they are and, and refine it based on those early discussions. So again, thinking about user experience, thinking about predictability um and ease of use. Post-seeker, uh, as we, these are all of those elements I just talked about, have been part of the project really since the inception. Uh, just talking through a couple elements uh since we held that scoping session, which again, scoping is part of the secret review process. Uh, we started that pro, we held the public hearing on January 7th of 2020. And the final scoping document was adopted in March of 2020, which as you all recalled, March is really when things kind of froze. Uh, we stopped that process. Some of the things that we heard during the seeker process, probably first and foremost was housing. You are not doing enough with housing. We heard that from public, from the public, we've heard that from housing advocates. And we heard that, uh, and we worked with uh counselors to refine what we're doing with housing. Uh, specifically, uh, Council President Hudson, uh, Counselor Allen, uh, former Counselor Bay all had made it very clear that we need to develop some affordable housing uh rules and regulations. And that's exactly what we have done uh since that scoping process started. We've worked very closely with those counselors, uh, briefed, um, I believe, just about all the other counselors and worked very closely with Commissioner Collins, uh, Michelle and others in NBD to continue to refine that. Um, and what you have is a series of both um incentives, uh, requirements uh and some new policies that will help uh facilitate the development of affordable housing in the city of Syracuse. Um, first one being, and, and I'll go over these. I know we could, this could probably warrant a whole meeting unto itself. But a requirement, this perhaps is the first and foremost, and, and this is unique to large upstate cities. We are really at the forefront of this, and I think that is worth noting. We've done some research on that uh recently. All new development and redevelopment, so whether that's a new building or the redevelopment of an old building uh greater than 19 units, basically larger format uh buildings must set aside uh 10% of those units for uh affordable, uh, that they would be identified. And that is as part of that redevelopment and development process. That is not, you build the affordable unit somewhere else or in a different neighborhood, but that, that, those projects are included. Uh, and, and we, we've started to discuss that as part of zoning is, is mixed-income development, that you have market rate and affordable in the same development. Um, that is new since the scoping. Uh, we've, again, I've talked briefly about housing choice, the accessory dwelling units, uh, the row homes, both of those have been uh expanded uh a- as housing choice options. And we've also created um some incentives in uh low-density residential areas that you may add an additional unit or two if that is identified as an affordable unit. Uh, so these are things that we heard uh again, and worked with those counselors. Um, we've heard from housing advocates a- and the public, and we actually uh had a, one of the things that we did, um, as you can imagine, there was, there was broad support from housing advocates, from those counselors I mentioned. Uh, but even in the development community, we, we had meetings with about a half dozen developers who all said, absolutely. You need, the city has uh a quality, affordable housing issue. You need to start thinking about this. We need to start thinking about that. And that's exactly what uh we did. The site plan review process is something that, again, I, I, I mentioned that earlier. We've revised that to include the sketch plan, which is that early informal review with staff and, and potentially with the, the reviewing boards, and we've also made some edits for clarity along the way. The last, uh, the last topic here is the zoning map, and I'll move through this fairly quickly. Um, we talked about the ordinance. The other part of that is the zoning map. Uh, we have developed the final draft of the map. And what the, what the map does, we have those new zoning districts, residential, mixed-use, industrial, open space. We've applied all of those uh new zoning districts to the city's parcel map. Uh, the city has over 41,000 parcels. I think it's close to about 41,200. Uh, zoning has been applied to all of them. And the, and again, we, we've had, I think this is version uh map number five that we're, we're currently on. The first one being developed a few years ago. Since that first version, we've made changes to about 5,000, a little bit over 5,000 parcels. And that has largely been driven by um property owner, neighborhood input, stakeholder input, and just research, refining that as we go. Um, looking at um, again, and, and some of the things you see on here, prominently downtown being a mixed-use district, portions of Erie Boulevard, this is the Northeast quadrant, uh, green is the new open space districts for our parks and cemeteries, things like that. Um, re- the rezone map is really where we've captured all of those new zoning districts. Long-term implementation. Basically, as we move through this process, um, what, what happens after that? We understand that the, that this document is, is a living document. It's one that needs to not wait another uh 55 years to be updated. Uh, we have established metrics to track the performance. We talked about those administrative adjustments. Are we using them too much? Should we change something? Parking regulations? Do we need to do more? Uh, the thresholds for minor and major reviews, is that off balance? Or things that we're considering minor administrative reviews, but the public wants to see them? Should they be major reviews? Tightening that up. Um, our plan and, and SIDA is actually, uh, the Industrial Development Agency has set aside some money uh so that we can work with our consultant, Clarion, um, who, who really helped us develop this to come back in a year, year and a half and revisit this with us. So I, I think it's important to note that, you know, the adoption of this, which, you know, there'll be a lot of meetings, there'll be a lot of discussion. This is not the last time we're going to touch this document. It's something that we understand that the day it's adopted, there are things that we're going to have to start reviewing and evaluating, and we've built in metrics to do that. We've set aside dollars to do that, and we've got some experts to help us make those changes, let's say, a year out. Um, and, and, and that, that final bullet, I think, really kind of captures the, the essence of what we're trying to do. Evaluate the effectiveness of this new ordinance in creating desirable places in our community, in our neighborhoods, on our business corridors, in and around our parks, in and around our schools, and thinking about how um transit-oriented development, considering all the transportation changes that will be occurring over the next five to 10 years. How does zoning react to them? How do we need to update zoning uh based on those? So finally, uh, last slide here, uh, status and next steps. Uh, i- i- it is February, uh, we're holding, obviously, this informal uh this committee meeting, I should say. It's our intention to deliver those three items, the ordinance, the map and the, uh, the secret documents to you uh in the near future prior to us um introducing legislation to you uh later this month uh to begin consider restarting that secret process as Matt talked about. Um, we anticipate, as, as Matt mentioned, that that uh, that March will really um will be a, you know, there will be public hearings, there will be public comment periods. Uh, we anticipate that to be about a three- or four-month uh process, that state review process. Uh, and then uh this summer, we expect uh the completion of that and, and the um reviewing consideration and adoption of the new zoning ordinance and map. So um with that, covered a lot of ground, uh, covered multiple years of work. Couple, uh, covered a hundred-plus public meetings. Uh, we have a great ordinance. Uh, we've made some huge improvements, some much-needed improvements that will affect quality of life, that will affect safety, that will affect housing. Uh, we're excited to talk uh with you about them and um happy to, you know, I'll, I'll defer to the, uh, Counselor Hogan about our, our next steps here.
Thank you, Owen. That was uh very long and very concise, though. God bless you. We got a lot to cover, and I could see, you know, it's only the third time in the city's history we've taken on something like this, because this is pretty serious. And I was wondering if uh any of my colleagues on the council have any questions.
Yeah, I, I do, Counselor Hogan, if I could go.
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Driscoll.
Yeah, I was just curious, uh, Owen, if the um, if the um, the affordable requirements, do those apply to all types of development? Is that, you know, would that a- a- apply to, would there be any exemptions, you know, historical or, or for university-type projects? What, what type of uh, would, would that just be flat across the border? Would there be some exceptions along the way?
Yeah, yeah, Counselor, good, good question. Um, this, a couple things. The requirements are citywide. It's not in one neighborhood or one area. Uh, it's not, it doesn't differentiate between uh what we commonly consider student housing. Uh, it is for all projects citywide. So I think that is an important requirement and important distinction. Uh, we're working with um, uh, We're working with Commissioner Collins and his team to, the historic is an important distinction. Is there some type of hardship where you're renovating an existing building that has three units? Adding another unit to a historic building may not be an option. So one of the things that we have considered is the development of a housing trust where the developer could pay into that and that the city would be able to use that and set aside those dollars to facilitate affordable housing elsewhere. And I'll, if that's something you, obviously, we can follow up on more details. I don't know if, Michael, you have anything to add to that? But there are those sort of physical hardship sort of things that we're considering. If you just physically are redeveloping a building that can't be added to, that we would allow and work with the development community in those instances. But our intention is that, is to include the affordable housing in the new development. Not build it elsewhere, not get paid the city, but to build the units. Our goal is to create affordable housing units.
So Counselors Michael Collins, Commissioner of Neighborhood and Business Development, Counselor District, or Driscoll, it's a great question to build on what Owen is saying here. When you look at the fact that we're not talking, you know, micro development. So, so we're talking greater than 19 units. Historic actually is an interesting example because due to the tax credits that are available there, that actually does sometimes add to the capacity to create affordable housing because you've got access to funding that you wouldn't have access to otherwise. So what we're trying to do is find that balance that recognizes the need all the way through this community to have more affordable housing with, you know, understanding what the costs of such development actually, actually are. But, you know, we have heard from constituents and from counselors, you know, that this, this is a great need. And so this is a time for us to be able to, to recognize how we can address that going forward.
I have a question, if I could get clarification on, Owen, you mentioned that the parks are going to be rezoned to open space districts to provide some more preservation. Is that literally every single park as we know it now? Or are there exclusions in there?
No, no, it is all city parks would get that open space designation. So I think that's important to note that that doesn't mean that you can't build a field house or a pool or a playground. It's not, hey, this is an area that can therefore never be changed. If they want to develop an outbuilding in Kirk Park, it would allow that. If you want to expand the, the, the area in Berry Park, that's acceptable. The idea is that we are acknowledging that these parks are special places, they're community places, and they're not areas for large scale development. They have to remain public and publicly accessible. So again, that's something that I think we all on this call, as we know, parks are a special place. We just had a big discussion about that. But this is something that kind of bringing our zoning up, up to speed with the value that we place on our parks. So I think important to note that that doesn't mean you can't do anything in parks moving forward. It just sets some limits on other types of development.
Great, one more question too. You said you're removing the parking requirement in, in some of that. So is the thought obviously to create more green space, not require, you know, so much pavement behind a house or an apartment building? And then is there adequate street parking to accommodate that rezone?
So we have, the parking large, parking is a complicated endeavor. It's largely based on use. And we have, in many uses, have reduced it. There are some instances where we have removed it altogether. Our goal is, is that frequently parking can be a burden for property owners and developers to provide. They don't necessarily need it. Now, I think we all know that there is frequently having one-site parking is a good thing. And I, I think I had some slides in there where you need to do it. But we are increasingly allowing people to rely on on-street parking and other options, community parking lots to provide parking. So it's increasing options, it's reducing requirements, but it's not across the board. There are no parking regulations. Some communities have done that. We didn't go quite that far, but we've made some pretty significant reductions.
Owen, on the parking, how would this affect, like some of my constituents up in the university neighborhood? I've sat on a few of the planning meetings where people was trying to get a driveway in. And that was like a real fight when they couldn't get the driveway into their home. And then you have a few of them, a few of like the landlords had the parking in the back for the students. And that always is an issue. So what's the remedy for that?
And, and the only thing that can be more complicated than parking is university area parking, Counselor, as you well know. We have a couple of different things. Parking is, we have created parking maximums. And I'm, I'm looking to my colleagues here if anything to add Heather and Dan regarding single family, two-family housing, parking up in that area. We put some limits. I think one of the big things up there, it's a balance between, does the entire park backyard get turned into a parking lot? Which I think many people living in those places like that option. But many adjacent property owners don't because they typically turn into one huge parking lot. There's no landscaping, there's stormwater issues. We've beefed up our parking regulations to help address that. But we have not necessarily discontinued parking altogether up there.
Great questions. Both Counselor Schultz and Allen kind of point to an issue where, you know, kind of turning the switch off on off-street parking requires some other programs, right? So currently in the university neighborhood, I know SMTC, the area MPO is doing a resident permit study. And one of the reasons that that's important is that if you're going to have a lot of on-street parking, the city should really capture some revenue from that, but maybe not for the people that actually live there. But maybe for the people that are parking there to go to a game or go to work. And then the other important thing, even downtown, is, is to make sure you capture revenue at times when it's, you know, more valuable based on location. So those are all systems that we can actually, you know, the city can put those in place, but it's going to take some time. And kind of Owen's point, that's why we couldn't just turn off off-street parking. With the parking behind apartment buildings, and Heather can kind of speak to what we currently have. And what the biggest challenge now is we have the regs. The city has regs on limits of impervious surface. And the most stringent efforts to enforce that have not really succeeded. And so a lot of it's, a lot of this is an enforcement issue as well. So, and all communities struggle with enforcement issues, especially cities. So that, but that doesn't mean that you don't put the proper policy in place. And what we're trying to do is create a framework and a structure within zoning and within the limits of zoning, you can't do everything in zoning, right? But then to work together to identify, well, what else do we need to do to really make this work? Whether it's enforcement or resident permit programs or capturing revenue from off-street parking to pay for your, your street maintenance. So as you know, as you all know, because you've been on the council for a while, or even if you're new, you've been in the city for a while, you know, these things are all intertwined and related to each other. So this is, you know, zoning is one piece and it's often one piece of the puzzle. But you, you know, we've got to figure out what the other pieces are and make sure it all works together. Outside of zoning too.
So Counselor Allen, it's Heather. So I guess what I can say overall, not just about parking and not just about university area parking is we can change anything that we want. But if it's not enforced, that is the biggest piece. Owen showed some slides of signs talking about us updating our signage regulations. Those signs that he showed are not allowed now. So without enforcement, even the best regulations are, are not going to be, you know, we can change everything, but we need good enforcement. But with respect to parking, we do have limits now, percentages in certain zoning districts. We also have screening requirements now. We are keeping those, not letting up on those. So if that, if that helps at all, but enforcement is a huge piece to everything in this ordinance, especially because we have changed some things and added some things that I, I will, you know, bring us to good design and, and good quality of life.
So could I ask, I'm just wondering, our neighborhoods are so unique. Is there a petitioning process? Is there something where we put this into, into effect, all these, this new rezone? And we find out something doesn't work or something that we haven't, that we haven't thought about in the future happens? I remember particularly, and I was going to call on Heather. We had a, an issue that was, had nothing to do with anything, but side handicap ramps became an issue because they covered up a certain amount of property. And they technically weren't allowed and we went back and forth on that. So is there going to be, and I'm thinking particularly not only about parking, but this accessory housing, which has run into, you know, it's sort of common out West, but it's running into a lot of problems out West, especially specifically in Los Angeles. We're talking about like changing structures that aren't housing structures normally into housing, correct? Is that what you're talking about, Owen?
No.
What you're doing out West?
The, the structures, the idea that you're, this would have to be, these are living spaces. So the idea that you just kind of turn your garage into a dwelling unit, it would have to be up to code. So the idea that people are just-
But that's exactly what they're doing out West.
Right, and this is something that, there's, there are some pretty rigorous design regulations if you're going to create these. They, first and foremost, they, they, the, one of the regulations are they must be owner, owner occupied. So it isn't something, the idea that everybody up in the university area is just going to convert the garage to a second unit. We've put some, some, the ability to prevent that along with some design standards about how you do that. In many instances, they are connected to the house. Regarding ramps, we have, this is something and the, we've met with mobility advocates that brought up that very issue. We've built in greater allowance for things like ramps, frankly, that are, can be just reviewed administratively. So we have made some of those longstanding issues improvements. And the accessory dwelling unit is a good example. We don't have them now. So I'm by no means going to say that that's a, is, is not going to be without issues. But I do think between the design standards, our ability to revisit this, I do think considering the housing issues we have, I do think it's something worth considering. But that's obviously the, the council's prerogative about how we move forward with that.
So Owen, there will be, like, will there be a process to, you're saying this is a living document? Will there be a process to amend this if we need to? And how would we do about, how would we do that? The council, see, I'm particularly thinking, just the Counselor Allen's point. Parking, in some of our neighborhoods are very unique. I live up on Tipperary Hill. In fact, when I was on this meeting, the guy across the street called me up to, so he could park his other car in my garage, in my small little driveway. So I mean, if something's built down the street for me, which is being considered, a housing complex that might not get approved for all the parking, all those extra cars are going to end up on the street.
Right.
And they'll already, and buy for spaces that other people-
Are already fighting for.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So I, I think the larger issue of is how do we fix issues that present themselves? I, I would suggest that, that we, many of the issues that we are currently dealing with, we've improved. Now, in doing that, you may create, as we all know, you, you change something and you create a whole new set of issues. I think what we have is a document that will be updated, that will be easier to work with. And then we're committed to coming back to you and working with you, as I said. And not only that, we've sort of put our money where our mouth is. We have funds dedicated to do that and at, you know, year one or 18 months. Or for that matter, if something comes up and nine months later, we have to do it. I think I can speak on behalf of the project team and the administration that we're ready to revisit that with you, to discuss those issues with you. A good example of that, the Neighborhood and Business Development Office is preparing for their housing assessment. That's going to be a wealth of information. We may be able to develop some additional affordable housing policies based on that or refines, refine the ones we have. So we're ready to, with, with neighborhood concerns, with district issues, with new data that presents itself, we're ready to revisit that with you. And I think we'll have a document that's a little easier to, to, to make those updates on. So that, that isn't, that's not necessarily going to mean we're, we're without any issues, but that's a commitment to say, we're ready to work with you to resolve them.
I think you have-
Who else is, Dan?
Yeah, this is Dan, I'm sorry. I was going to point out that the parking changes, they're not, they do not prohibit somebody from having off-street parking. They only lower the requirement. If a developer says, hey, I really need, you know, this much parking, it's up to the planning commission to work with the neighborhood and to figure out what the appropriate number is. If there's already an existing issue, that should come up during site plan review, okay?
Okay, so it's, so it's something he'll have to deal with. The, the, the zoning requirement would be less than he might need? And then he'd have to go to the planning commission to get it expanded?
Maybe, because we have maximums now.
We do have some maximums, but-
Oh, so it might not work out for the neighborhood as much as-
Exactly, right.
Okay, so the neighborhood would be calling Heather?
I, I, I think the important thing to note is that we are trying to build in greater neighborhood involvement and dialogue and setting up a process to do that. And also the, the site plan review process. Part of the, the element there is that early sketch plan review that you are able to meet with the zoning office, the planning commission and others in a public setting where these issues can be vetted early. And so you're right, there are some of those uses that may only need a half dozen parking spots, but there may be some that need all 25 parking spots. They have 25 units, they want them, they need them. That is not something that we are going to prohibit. But we are, we are putting a cap on it. So to go beyond that, it's something that they would need to work with the planning commission to, to accomplish.
Owen, I have a question. Now, what's, what's the strategy around commercial properties that are closely adjacent to, to residential?
The strategy there, and I think I'm sort of inferring here, the idea that you have commerce, non-residential properties or commercial properties that abut or are next to residential. And I think there, Counselor, South Avenue, Overland Glenwood, all over that area, really in every council district, we have examples of that situation. What we're talking about is not that those things cannot continue to operate, but as they are updated, as they are redeveloped, they must come into compliance with the new standards. Meaning that if they have lighting that's shining into their neighbor's second story windows, if they have parking that's encroaching on their neighbor's property, if they have signage that's not consistent with the new regulations, that must be brought into compliance in an effort to do two things. One, comply with the zoning ordinance, but two, reduce the adverse or the potential adverse impacts on those neighborhood resident, those neighboring residential properties. So there are, as Heather noted, some of that is already in place. We're beefing that up, landscaping, signage, lighting. These are all things that begin to get to, these are big issues where commercial and residential come together. We have a lot of instances that in the city, and we've developed design standards to help mitigate those issues.
Yeah, I'm asking that, Owen, because in my district, there are a couple of properties that are car shops, you know, commercial car shop places that are so, so close to residential area, very, that's like barely no distant at all. And, and I'm asking that, I mean, this is nothing of your, of your doing, but it's, it's, it's the way prior zoning laws were designed, right? And I'm asking, moving forward- And I'm asking, moving forward, you know, has there been consideration in something like that? Because this private, this business is next to, so close next to residential, can be nuisance. You know, especially, especially if the places contain people with disabilities and children, you know, it can, it can be, it can be a neighborhood problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor, keep in mind the comment I made about enforcement. That could be totally illegal right now. It could have been, had to have been screened, had to have a buffer, but never was installed. And for some reason, or not, enforcement hasn't caught up with them, or it has, and they just haven't done what they needed to do. So that, that piece is so, so important. And so if you're going to, when you look at this, and this also gets back to Counselor Hogan's point, you know, when we send you the law and you look at it, identify those things that, you know, you want to talk about further before you're voting on this. So that we can say, maybe you don't like the fact that we took out all these parking regulations. I think that you will, but, but hopefully, the second piece of that, when it is passed, we will likely see issues, the more applications that come in. So if we see all of these things coming in, we say, you know what, there's just, there's too many of this. Maybe, maybe this isn't appropriate here. I, it would, it'd be a comment upon us, A, to tell you that. So we could come back to you and say, listen, this just isn't working. Can we change this part of the ordinance? Likewise, as you hear from constituents or see these things happening yourselves, you come to us and say, you know, we really want to change this piece. We, we just don't think it's, it's really working here. So there, I'm hoping that that will happen, that we're not just going to sit here and say, yep, this is it, and we're never going to change it again. Because it's, that's not why we did it. I mean, I hope, moving forward, that we can make it the best piece of legislation it can possibly be to help everyone.
Okay, I'm 15 minutes over what I said. Is there anybody who's got a desperate question to ask Owen or Heather or Dan here? Because we're going to have other, Counselor Schultz, I caught you. If, because I'm going to have, we're going to have other meetings. Owen, so what is on our City of Syracuse website regarding zoning is the latest draft, correct?
No, and just very briefly, maybe some parting thoughts. I appreciate that, Counselor Schultz. We are going to deliver you the updated, you, the common council, the updated documents within the coming week. That's the new ordinance, the new map, and the secret documents. That is in preparation of a formal ordinance request that will come your way later this month. So essentially, before that legislation is before you, you will have these documents in advance of that and for your review. At that point, obviously, we will post everything on the city website for public review. And as we go into that public comment period, people will have these documents at their fingertips. So I think it's important to note, you don't have this today. You're going to have this, these new documents in the near future. This was the first of many conversations about it. We wanted to kind of get it on your radar. We think there's a lot of great improvements in rezon. And as Dan and Heather and I mentioned, if you have a follow-up email, reach out. If you're looking for a one-on-one conversation about housing, about parking, about anything, let us know. We're ready, willing and able to hold that. And Counselor, if you think it warrants another committee meeting about a specific issue, happy to be there, too. So we are going to be getting you some documents. We're going to be requesting to be on your agenda within the next 30 days. And that will all essentially really formally restart this process.
Well, I'm going to talk to members of my committee and my other colleagues on the council. I appreciate all your efforts, everybody in the city, every Owen, Heather, Dan, everybody, Mike, everybody's done this work. You know, we'll have to like, you know, and I appreciate your effort of any kind of counseling that you want to, that we do. I imagine you'll get some, more than a few phone calls from my colleagues. So with that being said, I will wish everybody a good afternoon. Elderly people like the city auditor should watch how he shovels tomorrow and, because we don't want to lose you there later. So I will, I'll call this meeting to an end and we'll probably have another meeting, I imagine. Thank you, Owen. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Counselor.